Need a motion to accept approval of the minutes as listed?
I had one that was mistaken, the minutes from the 28th. Under audience comment, there was a comment from Rick Reitner about the telephone system and Todd's new hire, and I'm pretty sure that happened a few meetings before.
It was on the tape for the 28th.
Was it for that?
Because I didn't do the minutes for the 14th.
It was on the tape?
The 14th, and it was on the tape that I did, yeah.
Okay.
Really, must have talked about both meetings.
Maybe they did. So I didn't ask that question.
Alright, you have a motion for a second?
Do you want to know what reports we don't have?
Yes, which ones do I want to know?
We do not have the Treasurer, the Police Pension Board, Redevelopment Authority, Department of Rec. Board, and Department of Public Affairs.
Okay. Alright, need a second? Jim being motioned?
I'll say it now.
Truitt?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Persing?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Bartello?
Yes.
You hear from SRI today?
Yes.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Jeff Rockwell, for those that don't know me yet, I'm the Elm Street manager. SRI is about halfway through, it's current membership drive, and we are doing Hometown Veteran banners for men this year. We currently only have 10, and last year we had 77. So due to the lack of applications, we decided to rehang, just today, we decided to rehang last year's banners. So for more information, please contact the SRI office, we would like to do that for people around this year. And also new this year for the veteran banners, we are now offering the opportunity to include honors on the side of the veteran banners. And the deadline for those applications are March 1st, and I do have a couple with me if you'd like some. And then as far as Elm Street and the whole neighborhood, we were recently given good news from the DCD that the Elm Street contract has in fact been amended to go through June 30th of 2014. That does not mean we will be receiving any more funding, no more funding. We just have, we have an extended time period to use the current funding that we already have. And then as far as the Hill Neighborhood, we were informed by Lou Cologne that as long as he receives a letter stating that we still have matching funds for a $250,000 grant to be applied for the streetscape of 1,200 block of Market Street, he will continue to review our application, and that was put on hold while Kristen was looking at it. And also, for those of you that are not aware, just a quick heads up, Lou Cologne and Donnie Cattori of the DCD are leaving the DCD, so if you do grant them out very much, I appreciate it for them. And so with the contract extension, we're looking to create a sustainability plan after the contract expires in 2014, and we're currently in the process of revising the budget for the DCD.
What's the 12th going out to? What kind of timeframe are you looking, the application just being reviewed right now? Construction would be 2014, 15 or 16?
I understand 2014, it looks like, they, they need to be wrapped up before we finalize the budget that they're on, but 2014, so we said, that probably won't happen. That grant actually was staying on for a very long time, and we just kind of, we're hoping to get through these.
We need to make a decision on the matching funds, correct?
What was that?
We need to make a decision on the matching funds.
We already have matching funds outside.
We do?
Yes, so, so we're ready to go there as long as we have the resources.
Is Lou going somewhere private, or is he retiring?
Lou is going to the executive position in Delaware, and he'll be leaving at the end of this month. So it'll be short notice.
Yeah. Any other questions about SRI? For your redevelopment authorities, Mr. Brown here, Paul? You want to go forward?
Yeah.
You're with Kramer, Jim?
Yeah, I'm still good though.
Right hand, P after me. I, Paul Brown.
I, Paul Brown.
Usall swear.
Usall swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And I will discharge.
And I will discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
Goodbye, Ellen. Goodbye, Ellen. Are you here back at full sash speed, correct?
I am, back at full sash speed.
Go ahead. One of the blow shows on, wait, you're lying. Oh my God, anything in particular, or just?
Well, we're getting closer to selling the house in Washington, actually, and when it's sold, we'll have a celebration.
The Juilliard Street, looking at spring, springtime.
I just talked today about scrapping it out, you know what scrapping to get out of it, like that regular, start getting ready in your warehouse down here, White Market, scrapping it out.
121 Juilliard Street, if you know where that is, and then the actual, the old warehouse sits right behind our warehouse at Chestnut All Street, that will be the next two that are coming down. In the meantime, Michael's, we're trying to acquire a few more yet?
Yeah, the great news is, we have a new round going to Judge Leese, and when we finish that round of acquisition, and we'll be up to 25 houses that the redevelopment authority has taken ownership of to remove Blake, you and the city. Our list, and Joe and Mike, you helped us with it, but the list originally was up to 68 that were a problem in the town. We started doing the acquisition, Francis did nice articles in the paper, and it's taken our list down, that when we finish these up, we'll probably be down to about 10 to 12. So it's working.
And we didn't do all this, that means a lot of people jumped up to what they're supposed to be responsible instead of fixing up some product, which is the goal, the wrong goal, so. Get it better every day. Jim, remember Front Phase Street?
Yes, in your pockets, you're going to take on seven prints. What just happened in 2011, they had a flood, and in the north end of the WPA wall, back in 97, that section was repaired. Now, this section wasn't touched on the last construction because it was repaired and it showed no signs of any problem, but going to flood in 2011, we had a problem. Numerous blowouts in the highlighted areas that were, yes, it's in your pockets. Dave, you don't, Dave, I'm sorry, Dave. One second, yeah. So, I took Todd down the other day, showed him the areas where we had the blowouts. The engineer was down, reviewed the area, and in the packets, HRI, there's a proposal page, third page back, is the area in question? And page two is the estimate of cost. Now, right there, it's showing $245,179, that's just an estimate, the engineering firm asked to come in, did a total evaluation, but that was an estimation within reason, so we would have something to work off of. Then it shows total cost with the engineering fees, 281 less 130, according to FEMA's being 30,000, and the municipal authority has put 100,000 into the pot, showing basically a 105,200, 152,000. Now, Todd and I spoke the other day, Todd, would you like to explain exactly how you talked about going back and borrowing money when we were disgusted?
Since this is an infrastructure issue, one that's relevant to not only the riverbank, but most importantly, stabilization of the river wall, we have, of course, two different easy ways of going about it. One, as Jim mentioned, is to utilize the existing funds, we have some insurance reimbursement for some of the blowout, we've got money from the municipal authority. Each and every year, of course, we collect the debt service tax, and legally, we're only allowed to collect that tax if we have debt incurred, as at this point, we still do in relation to the riverfront project. We could certainly continue that yet for another year and utilize some of those proceeds to pay on this particular project. The other alternative would be actually utilize short-term note mechanism, which will allow us to go and bid, obviously, to local banks, or solicit bids from local banks to put in short-term financing on the project, and then we actually incorporate this into our block grant funding scheme for the coming years. I think one of the issues that we looked at it, it's important to push and to make sure everyone's clear on, is that these blowouts occur in part because the bank behind the wall builds up so much pressure from the water that's actually between the wall and the current WPA wall, that whenever we have high water, we've got excessive rains, that pressure pushes the existing rock out. And when it pushes it out far enough, it creates a blowout, then the river actually pushes that downstream. So it's happened multiple occasions, and in the end, it's jeopardizing all the work that's been done.
How's it, how is it right now? Is it stabilized at least right now, or is it?
There's some holes. There's big holes along there.
The last one?
Look in that, this paper right here, even down here in fine print, it said, of course, this is back in 97 when you made a repair for another blowout, that exactly what they did, they took some pressure, ground in there. Well, that's exactly what they shouldn't have been doing, because now there's no drainage, and you basically made it like a concrete wall. 2011 floodwater table came up that grate, pressure, pressure behind Lou, there's numerous holes down there, some were three foot diameter, there's a proud one about five foot diameter. But now we can go back and replace that, like we did with the ready rock, that's going to solve the problem. This is the last section on the river itself, that the WPA wall's still existing. We have WPA wall from the south end, but that's all behind, it's back flooded, and of course, the maintenance road is in front of it, doesn't get the exposure like this stuff right here does.
Corner.
So it's the last section.
There is an opportunity too with the existing wall, because it's construction stone, and obviously, it's historic construction stone. That stone could also be resold to help reduce some of the costs as well, so there's an opportunity for us to do that if we wanted to.
So I'm basically asking, I want to be making a motion to have the engineer pursue, one, the design work, of course, permitting is very critical, what we're hoping is to continue on with the permits which we're using now, just add to them, I'm not sure it's going to work out if we're dealing with the Corps of Engineers and the waterways people, so, but has to be done. Our goal would be to have everything in place for this fall when the fiber dam was let down, we're going to do the final phase of this WPA wall.
I think it's a positive thinking, I mean, I don't want justice and citizens to be able to go through the same thing also.
Should have been.
Back to what you motioned, Jim? I made a motion to be, have the engineering firms draw up an agreement for them to proceed with the end, the design work, and also the permitting, and then go off for bids this summer, and have it go into construction phase as soon as the fiber dam was let down, and be completed by the end of 2013.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Persing?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Bartello?
Yes.
Truitt?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
That's for you to pull along to then.
Okay.
And then, of course, David, the next section there is Phase Four, which would be continuing the sidewalks and curving north to the Marina, there's been a lot of interest, and we'll be sending down Charlie Ross from the Chamber, he got a new name too, and looking for funding through PennDOT and other sources in the next year, so we'll see what we can put together. Just want to bring that to the table, so you know we're out there looking for the funding.
Is there something on leave on, update once in a while?
Yes, I'll continue with funding being put together. We had some commitments back when we had the dedication, because the state being the fact that we have a fiber dam which is run by the state, the fish ladder is installed someday, of course, our project ties in the Schmucken Dam that way, and of course, we have the Marina, which is another state operation, so tying them together is something that you'd like to see done, state themselves.
Okay. Questions on that? Ticketing, code officer, Jim?
Doing this, gentlemen. The other day, I'm not sure when it was, it might have been two weeks ago, I'm told by Cheryl Delsa, it's no big deal, the co-officers, I guess they just get sworn in or something by the magistrate to allow them to take in ticket cars, because so often, they see something, and then they have to call the police department, to get them sworn in, they just do it themselves, instead of running the police department down.
Yeah?
I'm just making a suggestion.
Talking about the code officer, was one, when we got those applications the other week, about, for the part-time job, there was one young lady that came in and applied, but her application didn't make it to me, I just wanted, we're going to, we can let her come back in and put that application back in again? She said she brought it, came in on the 25th and handed it in, but I never received it, so.
What's her name, I'll look through the file.
Heather Kelly.
And she turned it in your department, or would she turn it in?
At the city clerk's office, but it never made it to my department. Can we leave that open again, or no, or is that still open? Do we still have some people come in and apply for that, since we haven't really done the interviews yet?
The closing date is February 1st.
February 1st.
On the advertisement. We've got plenty of applications.
You're just going to see if it's in the pack?
Mm-hmm. I'll give, well, I'll give it.
Did you get a list up? How do you know it's not there?
Well, she called me to see if she got, if I got it.
You went and looked through the pack yourself?
Yes, I did.
Oh.
Went through the internet, now it's not.
I made copies for them, I didn't give them the originals, so it may be in folder.
Oh, and the originals, maybe missing a copy.
Yeah.
Okay. Fire Department urgency respond, building procedures. Mike had something to do with this, Joe?
Yeah, I didn't put this on the agenda, but I've read it, and I, this was something that I talked to Merle Phillips about three years ago, and he told us that we weren't allowed to bill for something that the people are already taxed for. And he said, you can run a public awareness campaign to get them to turn in their bill to the insurance company, and we can bill the insurance company, but we can't really bill the citizen, because they're already paying tax for fire protection. He said Holidaysburg and another city, Westchester, already sued and had to pay the money back. So unless the laws have changed, I mean, if you know something different, I mean, I'm open to suggestions if you know anything, but.
Well, first of all, I was unaware that the city had a fire tax.
No, we have, no, they, that's part of the general fund, you know, that's, you know, like the real estate taxes, and, you know, people pay taxes, and that's part of the services the city provides.
Well, we're not, we're not billing our citizens, we're billing their insurance companies.
Well, the way, the way the ordinance reads, it does say billing the property owner. So if it changed just that one wording, and they're saying that you're going to be billing the insurance companies, I don't have a problem with it, but if you're billing the property owner, then, you know, that's something they're already paying tax for.
Right, well, I'm going to ask Mr. Saxton to speak on that.
Okay, that's fine.
See if he really did all the work for this, I want to commend him for the job he did, so I thought he wrote a rule on his order.
Thank you, Mike. Yes, Mr. Bartello, as members of council, Mayor Persing, I did put this together, and I was aware of the conversation that Merle Phillips several years ago, because I believe we had some conversation on that. I did go to see Merle after that.
Okay.
Shortly after that, and talked to him about it, and mentioned to him that, you know, it kind of like ties our hands, and, you know, his only comment at that time was, well, it's a work in progress. But that being said, it still is the way it is, and I understand what you're saying, we're not intending to bill.
No, I understand, Jim.
Individuals, okay? So, and that's why, you know, if we need to tweak this a little bit, that's fine, because basically, what I did was, I went online, the internet's a wonderful place, and I pulled out sample ordinances from other communities and departments that have, and that's where a lot of this wording come from. Now, the content is pretty much consistent across the board, okay? But, yeah, when we, when we brought it up at fire department meeting a couple, a couple months ago, about two or three times a year, we'll get a solicitation, if you will, from outside service companies who want to do department billing for us, okay? And obviously, for a fee. And the department wanted to look into it, and I said, you know, we don't need to do that, we can do the billing ourselves and not pay those, you know, fees and that sort of thing. So we started taking a look at that, and actually did do some billing to some insurance companies, not to individuals directly, although when we send the bill, we send it to the individual, okay? Because sometimes on the fire scene, or an accident scene, or things like that, you don't have the insurance information available.
Right.
We send the bill to the property owner, and big bull there says, please turn this over to your insurance carrier.
Right.
Okay? And then what has happened is, you know, some of them would, would pay us, and then one in particular, I won't mention the company, but I got a phone call, and it's the representative who says, does the city have an ordinance in place? I said, no, they don't. Well, thank you very much for your bill, have a nice day.
No, I, I assumed that was why you were putting it through, yeah.
Okay, so I mentioned it to the chief, and the chief said, can we maybe put an ordinance together? So that's why I have this document in front of you. I'm more than happy, if the council's willing to let us move forward with this, obviously, we want to do it right, okay? And if we need to tweak a few words to take that particular item out, more than happy to do this. But the bottom line is, you know, the fire department is just like every other organization, we're all looking for funding, okay? And, you know, we need funds the same as the next person, and we're looking at a way to maybe possibly offset or mitigate, you know, wear and tear any equipment, replacing equipment, and that sort of thing. So that's why we're here tonight.
I mean, if you, like I said, if you take out the property owner and put insurance company in there, and I think under the law, it still is voluntary for the insurance company, but most of them will pay it.
Right.
But it's just an awareness thing for the people, that they know they have to turn that bill in for you guys, to the insurance company, and not just let it sit on the coffee table, so.
Dan, you said it was a combination of other communities, do you know any, can you name any offhand?
Oh, no, I don't remember off the top of my head.
Here's my question, we, years ago, we tried that with the police department in certain accidents and that, and we couldn't do it, I don't remember the specifics why we couldn't, but it's, like I said, things change a lot, but I'd be interested in, if you could, because again, this doesn't look like something we have to pass tonight, and then I think everybody here is supportive, and again, I agree with what you said, we want to make sure we get it done right, but I'd be interested in, if you can just, the ones who you copied this off of, just let me know a couple of those, if we can actually contact them, just to see if they had any issue with it, or how it worked for them, that type of thing.
Well, I believe, Mike, I believe, and I don't know the, but I think Schmucken Dam bills, is that correct?
Schmucken Dam, Silvers Road.
Dale's Road bills.
Homeless War.
Homeless War, they all, they all bill for services.
I think they do too. I believe, I pretty much believe that every community around us bills but us.
Like I said, we can have the ordinance, and just, I like, if you would just change that from property owner to insurance company, or something in that nature, so that we're not tack, you know, charging people for something that they're already paying tax for, that's, I mean, whether Schmucken Dam is doing it or not, doesn't make it right. I mean, I just, I don't want to charge the people for something that they're paying taxes on already, so.
Yeah, is it okay to just leave it on the agenda, and that gives Mike two weeks to look at it too, and then?
Absolutely.
Take whatever you want with us. I think Joe talked about Section 14, there's only places I see without reading on any bills, any fees built by the property owners.
There's a few places in there where it says property owner, but.
And see if anything else pops up, Dan, we'll just leave it on the agenda for the next meeting, Dan. And then I'll contact, I just want to contact a couple of communities, see if they had any issues.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time, David, that's, that's a nice piece of work, I mean, a lot of, a lot of work there, I'm sure. Any questions? Keep any microphones on? Uh, group of pain, voices high.
Yes, the vouchers report would have been sent out on Friday afternoon for everyone's review, looking this evening to make a motion that we make payable outstanding bills in the amount of $76,741.05 from general fund, in addition to that, another $8,601.54 out of the liquid fuels account.
I just have, I just have one question about the voucher report, Village Profile was an ad in the Chambers website for $2,000, was that, how long do we keep that, how long does that ad for, for the whole year?
Yes, and there's, there's, and then it's a nice glossy.
Okay. I just want to make sure it's for the whole year.
Second?
Thank you.
Bartello?
Yes.
Truitt?
Yes.
Ister? Persing? Snyder?
Yes.
Taxes exoneration, Adam.
Again, in your packets, I can have a request for exoneration from taxes, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the requests as noted by the individuals in the amount shown for the reasons indicated.
Second?
Truitt?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Persing?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Bartello?
Yes.
Audience comment?
Can I say something?
Yes, you can.
I'm going to check into that, Mr. Reitner, because that could have been left from the December 26th meeting, and it didn't get raised off. So I'll check onto that.
Audience comment? Yes, sir.
I've got two questions, first of all, Jim, you said about the sidewalks going north to the Marina?
Yes.
Where, how far north were you talking?
He's saying somewhere.
On Front Street, heading north, yes, all the way up Front Street.
You mean up to the bridge, then?
Yes, you cross across there, go under the underpass, which is Upper Augusta, and of course, intersection already designed for crosswalks in, and it's, they're already there, you can cross across, walk across the bridge and go over to.
Okay, so you're basically going up to where the old chute used to go across from Barrett down into the river?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that's where you go, you see, like there's up there, the underpass, it's pretty fast, and then you're there.
Is it already?
Okay, I'm just, the Marina and the sidewalks is insane.
And Rick then, over the island, they're already working, bringing the sidewalk by the little tasty trees, under the bridge, down to the Marina, so that when you come across from Norrie, so where you have to cross there, that's been on the drawing board for a couple of years. So the whole intention is to bring Schmucken Dam, actually, to walk Schmucken Dam up across over to Marina, or from Norrie, and then long-term trails and rails, of course, the old rail line is on the other side of Norrie, you're crossing the old white bridge, that runs up Mifflinburg, Lewisburg Way, and so forth, so, you know, going down a road, they tie things in like that for future.
The second question, Todd, was asked, do you bring up what the status, no statistics on the second round of camera orders?
We actually have the final camera delivery slated for next Monday, the 18th, so we'll have at that point all of our inventory of equipment in hand.
Okay, so I can take that back, more be, more height, thank you.
Yes?
Jim, going back to the halfway to the island, is it just a walkway, or will it be a bike, biking as well, or just walkway?
The extension I was referring to?
Yes.
Well, technically, because of the fact, PennDOT requires, I'm going to take a wild guess, eight feet minimal to allow pedestrians and bicycle traffic, okay? If you look out front here right now, there's some signs every once in a while, no bicycles, but nobody enforces it, because, well, we haven't, two years now, we haven't had any problems, and I've been questioned about it, my goodness, if there's some little kid riding a bicycle with his parents down there, a little tricycle, what's the big deal? And I see people going to Schmucken Dam to work, okay, I'd rather have them riding there, they belong to the road.
Sure.
Okay? So I can't sit here, because I know there's some sections where it gets pinched down, probably won't be eight feet, but if somebody was riding from here going to work to Norrie, riding to Marina to exercise, I'm not going to worry about it, chief, you're not going to worry about it, are you? Because I, just so it's utilized, I've not ever seen anybody have any problems, you know, because normally, the person on the bicycle slows up a little bit, and other people step over, because, you know.
Courtesy. Courtesy.
Yes. But I think it'd be nice to be able to go from here, walk to Marina. That's too far for me to walk, but, uh, now, like Bobby, you're, you know, Mr. Campbell, you'll walk over there, so. But I think it would, uh, help it utilize both, you know, our project and their project, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, the role of the Lake Augusta Commission, for, I'm not exactly sure what the title that committee is, but there's a big overview of that, of having that, we literally walk around the entire Lake Augusta, that's the goal. So, we're working on our side, what they ever do on the other side, as far as walkways or runways, or bicycle paths, whatever it may be, but that's been discussed for years. And it's probably the same thing for the financial. But somebody didn't think about getting across on our side of the river, I'm going to go up Front Street, because that's, I just, you're not going to go underneath that bridge, that's for sure, so we're going to have walkways across a pretty busy street, I don't know how that's going to work, but, but that's, that's the ultimate goal, is that eventually, you can go for your walk, walk around the entire seventy-three miles of this.
So will that also include lighting?
Yes.
Okay. Great.
Pretty much through what we have there now.
Yeah, what we have now, basically, just continue that up through there.
Any other audience comment? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilman, and Terry. I, uh, just wanted to, um, address a couple of things going back to the meeting on the twenty-ninth, please. First, I'd like to commend, um, Councilman Ister for making improvements on your property that I was complaining about with the trash and the parking on the sidewalk at four oh six, well, not. So thank you. That's looking better.
You're welcome.
Um, also, I'm a little confused now, when I looked, um, at your agenda, and it says that, um, Councilman Ister, uh, it says code officer ticketing. It makes it look like, um, you're in charge of the code officers' ticketing?
I thought it said it needed suggestion.
There is no code office ticket. He made a suggestion how the code office could issue tickets.
Okay, so will the code officers...
Any of us have put anything on this agenda, we put our names out?
Will the code officers be, um, ticketing now, instead of the meter rates?
He just, he just made the suggestion, no, not instead of, no. Police Department will do their job now. What he suggested, what Councilman Ister suggested a while ago, was that the code office can do that in certain parts of town, that of course, the meter person won't be.
Yes, because it does seem like they're overworking, they're not able to ticket, you know, the people that they're, um, running and looking at their properties. Um, I want to go back also to a meeting that you held on November thirtieth, twenty-ten, where you addressed items about improving the city and better housing. And one of your items were the solutions to advance rental participation. And you listed that you wanted owners and tenants to be accountable for the properties. You recall that?
November tenth?
No, that was back in twenty-ten.
I'm probably the one you're saying, go on.
I, I'm just saying that at that, at that time, you made a point, that you would like owners, as well as the tenants, to be accountable for the property that they're renting.
Okay, without taking out of context, I'm going to agree with you, go ahead.
And that was under a heading where you called it, "Solutions to Advance Rental Participation." So that was from the meeting held on, I'm trying to go, I'm going in a direction. So that was from your meeting on November thirtieth, twenty-ten.
Couch meeting?
It was the first time of meeting.
This is a couch meeting?
No, it was a separate meeting that you had, um...
With you? Who was that meeting with?
With several people. Uh, you had the owner of the Edison Hotel, you had a real estate person there, you had a person from Cedar Park.
That's like a comprehensive plan meeting, maybe.
Yeah, that's probably what that was.
I don't know what you call this, but...
Oh, yeah, we had fifteen, twenty people, we had, we had, uh, easels sitting all over the table, all that type of stuff, we were just kicking ideas around. Okay, I remember that meeting, so go ahead.
Okay. Um, so I'm like, like I said, I'm kind of leading up to things here. Um, I have been complaining about, you know, different properties. I called, because I really feel passionate about your saying, um, you want to help Sunbury look good, attract good people, um, you know, build up the economy here. So I called the code office, I may even write them a letter, and I'll give them a list, saying, "Can you check out this property? Because it has furniture on the porch, the furniture's been there for, um, a month now." I don't just run around calling every day, but if I see it's there two, three weeks, I feel that somebody should pay attention to it, okay? Um, so, it looks like chapter one thirty of the Sunbury Code says, "Tenants are not permitted to keep trash, junk, or interior furniture on porches or sidewalks." And that is going back to when I called the code office. I feel that if there's a truck parked on the sidewalk with trash in it, somebody should be ticketing that property, or ticketing that person that owns the truck with trash in it parked on a sidewalk. I shouldn't have to hear that you got five feet to walk on that sidewalk for pedestrians to walk. Are you following me here?
Yeah, I'm not sure who are you addressing me, but keep going.
No, it's not, it's not.
You're talking about the code office?
You're the mayor, you're the council, and I'm just trying to bring up some things that I think need to be addressed by the council, if you want the city to look beautiful.
And anywhere.
The city can't look beautiful if you got carriages, and you have coffee tables in the...
Are you addressing a complaint to the, to the police department, or are you addressing a complaint to the code office?
You can't get around anybody here, because everybody went to school with each other, you're married to each other, there's some relationship where I, 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 there's some relationship going on, and excuse me, because I'm not born and raised here, but there's, there's, there's a, a club, and I'm not in the club. And when I call, I get all kind of excuses thrown at me.
No luck, no luck, that's raw.
I get, I, I get, I get excuses thrown at me, and something doesn't get done. So I'm trying to bring it to the attention of all of you, and maybe, when you're brainstorming, you can bring these things up, and, and, and talk about them, maybe you can make up an ordinance to, um, take care, address some of these things.
Well, I think if you look back in history, you'll find out that I was mayor when we passed enough of the exterior interior furniture on the porches, so we make lots of ordinances here.
Okay, well, I call, I call, and I have problems. I have problems getting that taken care of.
But your problem is you don't like the waste enforced? Or you don't, no one's enforcing it at all?
Yeah, you could say that, you could say that.
Does anybody, is, is, when you call the code office, does somebody show up? When you call the police department, does somebody show up? Is that...
It took me three years to get Mr. Ister to clean up his property. That's where I'm going. You're pushing me to say those things. I'm trying to be diplomatic, but you push me to start calling names and start giving dates.
You can mention my name any time.
Oh, I am, I take great pleasure.
Well, I can handle it. Wait a second, let's back up here before you go any further, please. David, what she's referring to, and we can't get, Chief, I wish you would take it, but I explained it to her, but maybe she'll listen to you.
I just voted a chapter one thirty out of the Sunbury Code.
Can I finish, please? Where that truck says, "I own," uh, there is the problem, you just, you can't get through the fact that I own that piece of property. I'm sorry to break the news to you, I own it.
Yes, I know that, sir.
Good. Chief, if you would take five minutes, explain to her something down here, show where the sidewalk is, and show where my property is. The truck's parked on my property.
It's still a sidewalk.
Chief, help me.
And anybody who looked at a video that I took, and it has the students from Schickel High School, walking on that sidewalk, passing that truck, and I would certainly think that it has to have some kind of, um, a safety violation.
Okay.
Okay, and, and like I said, that's still saying that, that it is not permitted to keep trash, junk, or interior furniture on porches or sidewalks. And I have to ask Mr. Ister, you know, why don't you let him park a porch of street in front of your house, and see how you like it? So you keep wanting to say...
Is there furniture on the porch? Did I say it now, is furniture on the porch?
Um, you know, I'm not, you guys want to try to make me look like a fool, but I'm not a fool now.
No, but ask me what you said. Are you not, you're not talking about furniture on the porch? Is there furniture on the porch?
And when I call, I'm here, I get excuses. I'm not going to go tell that person to take their baby carriages off the front porch, or I'm not going to tell them to do this and do that, when these things do not look good on the front porches.
Pete, now you're done?
Okay, so now, let me, let me finish, Jerry, you can say anything, because I just want to go through my little thing. So, at the last meeting now, Councilman Ister felt that he wanted to bring attention to everyone, letting them know that I wrote a letter to Councilman Bartello, and I, um, mentioned that he was purchasing property, and purchasing it using inside information similar to an inside trader. That may have been the wrong word, so I want to take away the word, "inside trader," and say, "front-running." And everybody can research that at their own time. On the code office, mouth getting dry, on the code office website, under code complaint, it says, "Your personal information will be kept confidential. This form is one way for residents of Sunbury to help keep Sunbury beautiful." The letter that the councilman read, I don't know how he got that letter. So I want to say to Councilman Bartello, how did he get that letter that I emailed directly to you?
I have no idea, I didn't send it to him. I didn't send it to him, I don't know.
Give you some idea of how he got confidential, uh, did somebody in the code office sit it up?
What, who did you send it to?
I have no idea.
That doesn't matter, sir, the fact is that I mailed this, it's, I mailed it in confidence to supposedly the director of the code.
It was a private Yahoo mail.
So I'm now going to ask Councilman Ister, how did you get a copy of that letter, sir?
What's the next question?
I'm not getting the answer on this one.
I know you're not.
How did you get the letter? How did you get a copy of it? How can you expect the residents of the city to think that they're going to have that information kept confidential, if you're going to end up with it? I don't know if everybody else on the council got a copy of it, or who else got a copy? And I'm trying to find out, since you brought it up, and you read it to the public, how did you get it? I didn't send it to you.
Joe, that must be related.
Well, thank you very much. And, uh, again, I want to address the code office as saying, "The code office is a request that each property owner and its occupant of a property remove old items, um, their property, and any unused item which holds water, because it could lead to bugs, vermin, and other health issues." Thank you for listening, Jerry.
Joe, you wanted to address that?
Yeah. Um, I have no problem with her, she calls, I go down, well, I explained to her before at one time, the furniture that she was talking about is marked right on there, it's patio furniture, and she says, "Don't they have to take that in?" I said, "No, if it's upholstered couch and chair, we jump on that immediately." I cannot make people take patio furniture in the house. And I think there's three or four strollers, this one maybe has, she has three or four kids, little ones, and she called me about that, and she said, "It doesn't look good." And I said, "Well, I know, but, uh, a stroller is not, to me, garbage or rubbish, they get dirty, I wouldn't push a stroller in my front room, I'd have to grant it, like..." So, I mean, I didn't know if there was a box of diapers, I have to admit, dirty diapers, I finally got to the lady coming to the door, I said, "You can't have a box of dirty diapers." She goes, "I'm so sorry, her diaper gene or anything, all the foam in, something happened to it, and they ran me that." But I get down there, when you call, either Mike and I are both pronounced.
I'm not complaining about you guys.
Oh, okay. So...
I'm not complaining about you, but I will complain if somebody is stopping you from being effective at what you're supposed to be doing. And when I call, and I say to you that there's baby carriages, there was, like you said, a container of dirty diapers, and there was a container with plastic bags full of kitty litter in it, and how can you say to me that you can't say anything to anybody like that?
I can tell you this, I...
It's next door to me, I live next door to these people.
Well, Regina, I can say, I was going to say, nobody's affecting us from us doing our job properly.
No.
Just the other, just the other week, we just had a car ticketed in the area you're talking about, because they were, they were parked on the sidewalk, so the kids walked up the street.
They were parked on the thing, and Mike directed the kids...
I just want you to understand that I am not saying anything against you.
We had a car ticketed.
That, that I commend you and Joe for doing your job, when you can do it, if nobody's threatening you not to go somewhere and give it a ticket.
We don't get... Look, Joe, who's the council or mayor is threatening us?
Nobody has ever threatened me. Seriously, I swear to God, Jim, James Ister has never said to me, "Don't go near my property."
Why would you talk to him? Why would you talk to him? Why are you addressing him?
Well, I'm just saying, he would never say to me, "Don't go near my property." I've never had anybody say that.
Because, Regina, now, right now, you're...
Why are you saying I...
Let me finish here for a second.
Calm down, please, calm down, because I'm not, I'm not yelling at you guys.
You know, right now, you're looking at, Joe's our boss, which he is, he is the director of public safety, but you also have to realize, there's four other bosses up there.
No, I don't recognize that.
Todd Snyder says to me, "Mike, you need to go look at this property," or Kevin Trup says, "Mike, you gotta go look at this property."
They're all our bosses.
"I'm going to go look at the property." They're all five my bosses. Just like they're all five.
We send letters to anyone.
Our public works bosses.
I don't, hey, I don't know if you remember, the first time I was hired, I sent you a letter, uh, about snow, snow removal, and you ended up on Easter. And I, I don't care with it. No, but I did, I remember it. You didn't get off work until you came up, you say, "You sent me a letter." I said, "What?" I mean, I'm already... When we do inspections, Mike and I do an inspection, I don't care if Ister owns whoever, if there is a violation, we write it up.
Joe, did I say you had a hair problem when I showed you the sidewalks?
It must be the same line you used to have.
I did, I did say it was.
I think I've lost some of them.
I've already paid off parking tickets already. Yes, sir.
How about your house number?
Uh, yeah, I have my Sunbury Code fifty-seven, my site. Just, just so Regina knows, if you're a municipal waste hauler, from the time you put your last piece of municipal waste in that truck, through the state of Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, you have twenty-four hours to unload that truck. So if that truck tonight goes out at twelve oh one, with the big garbage, he gets his last bag, he don't have to empty it till twelve oh one tomorrow.
He just can't park it on the sidewalk?
Yes, and he... Yes.
Well, this gentleman is now referring to us as business.
They fall under their code.
He's not a business.
And let me answer your question. A couple of months ago, Julie brought up a question about the Code Office and her integrity. She kind of got her point on that. I brought the same thing up because I was in the office. Joe Bartello, he couldn't get quick enough over to the hotel desk and tell the guy. So when you're wondering about your letter, I think I'd sit right there looking at Joe Bartello, how it got out.
Thank you.
Yeah, we probably should take that off the websites on air.
Yeah, my thing is, Councilman Ister didn't answer the question. You know, he obviously didn't want to be guilty.
Yeah, you guys are the ones that say we shouldn't have it.
Yeah, you said you were going to release it, so I said, "We shouldn't have it on the website if we're keeping it confidential." If we're ever not taking it confidential.
No, we are keeping it confidential. It's just that one particular time I talked to Francis about it. He said I was in the...
Yes, ma'am.
I just have a question about what this man said. So he's...
What's your, I'm sorry, your name?
Brittany. And so Joe is the department head for the Code...
What's your last name?
Bartello. Joe is the department head for the Code Office. So why is everyone else the boss of the Code Officers? I'm just confused about that.
Well, this is a council. I didn't say they're all the bosses. I said they're all our bosses.
Yeah.
Joe is the Director of Public Safety, Jim's the Director of Parks, Jim is...
But shouldn't Joe be your boss now?
He is our boss. But the other councilmen, I know Jim gone to Department of Public Works many times and said, "Hey, can you take a look at this?" Just like Kevin has come to us and said, "Can you look at this property?"
Shouldn't they be going to Joe?
So I won't get to the same thing.
Why would you? Why not? If the mayor tells me to do something, I'm not doing it.
If the police department sees something, it falls to the Code Office, they just call the Code Office.
Right.
That doesn't make me their boss. That makes the police department, he's a Code Officer. So we can do the same thing with Count Hall and stuff around cleaning up. Everybody works together. If Joe sees something, he thinks it should be ticketed, if Bart should be ticketed, he's going to get a hold of chief. That doesn't make him in charge of the chief, the charge of the police department.
Well, I'm just confused because of the way he worded that. Thanks for clearing it up.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Charles, I just wanted to go ahead and ask what computer was? Why did that matter?
What was that?
You asked what computer did you let it on?
Well, we have a city computer, it's anybody's business.
Yeah, but nobody looked at my city computer.
You know, the same, if it's a city computer, it's public knowledge.
You mean, you can access any, I can, as an employee, I would be able to access anyone's computer or email?
Probably not, but if there's a right-to-know request put in, anybody can access that.
Any emails are open to the public.
Well, for yours, yeah.
And if you sent that...
That's why I said that, Kyle.
Yeah.
First rate, it was written, no, no.
As a public, as a public, anybody's right to have a right to see that email. If you sent it, even though it's his private computer, you sent it for a public reason, I'm not, if I do a right-to-know, I'm entitled to see that email.
Yep. And Francis, I just had my computer in there on Monday for Francis, but that was after.
All right. So did Mr. Ister do a right-to-know to see that email?
Well, how would you do a right-to-know? How would you even know about? But how would you know about the email to even do that?
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Debbie Enders, and I serve on the board of Elijah Bull Soup Kitchen. We work out of the First Presbyterian Church. And our clients come in the alley on Center Street. We had an major problem on Saturday, and I was wondering if any time we had any snow or ice on a Friday night, if we could have a little extra salt placed in the alley. We had to literally go and purchase over 50 pounds of salt because we didn't know how to get the people down the alley. We sat boxes of food on the street, and they were literally going down the alley on their own. It was that icy. And if there's any snow or ice storms on a Friday night, would the city be able to give us a little extra salt for the alley?
Well, what we do is, Main Thoroughways are the first, the first part, Main Streets, and the alleys are always secondary. But Center Street, we'll make sure that it's...
Especially on a Saturday morning because a lot of our people come with...
It happens to all the stores, I'm not surprised it did. But yeah, but we'll do a best we can to make sure it's...
Thank you.
Uh, may I, can I say one more thing, please? In that letter that Councilman Ister chose to read the paragraph to, and that I thought I was sending in confidence to the Code Officers as a complaint, on, in voting on that letter, I have that I am in fear of retaliation because of my complaint about that property. And at that time, I had not known for a long time that it was owned by a council member. And I am also on the list for rehab. And I know that that rehab list has to come through you guys for me to get approved for my home to be rehabbed. So I just want to put that on record. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't think this board up here votes on that rehab list. We don't even see that.
You get the list and you look at the list and you have to approve it, sir.
No, we don't.
The list goes through, you don't see the list.
No, it goes by, it goes by whoever's on the list, and it goes down the list to see who's qualified.
They handle it independently.
So that, so the council doesn't see that list at all?
In fact, they don't even have the names on the list. It's, it's by...
Numbers of some sort.
Yes, yes, it is by numbers.
We get budgets at the end of the year, how much money's left in it, and we run out of it, so we can try to get more money in it. But Gavin and Miss Griffin, right?
Tim.
Tim Burke from CIO.
Yes, Tim Burke, we asked that.
He runs that program independently.
All right. I just, like I said, I just want that to go on record because that was something that I did write in that letter.
And he does send us a report monthly.
Right.
With the names on it. I get it.
Yeah, we, there's no waiting list. I don't think there's one person or a hundred people waiting list. We don't see that. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Kimberly Mall from Watson Town. And I had a question. I don't know who was speaking back here about the information about the email. Just for clarification, say if one of us were to email Mr. Bartello through his private email, would he say this is Yahoo? Whether it be at home or at work, does that same rule apply to private email as well? Or just, say your email is jbartello@whatever, whatever?
Yeah, I think if I use it, if I use it for the city stuff, then that does fall under, you know, right-to-know.
Private email falls there.
As long as I'm, like I advertise that so that the citizens can contact me.
And that's where I sent my emails, to bartello.com. I did send it to the Yahoo, and I thought that was his private email, so I guess it's not.
Well, it is, but I, if I put in a right-to-know, then I bring the computer in like I did this past Monday, and then the newspaper can look through it. But there was no right-to-know previous to that, that I would have had to bring the machine in to be checked.
Any questions?
Uh, Liberty Alliance Resolution Request. I do want to report that I had the opportunity to meet with United States Congressman Lou Borletta in between our last meeting, and that worked out well because I got to talk about three different things, and that was one of them. I actually brought this up in front of him. And Lou was pretty adamant, and he agreed, just like most of us agree with most of the stuff that's in this, what you're writing about. In fact, I even gave council some copies of a congressman from Texas by the name of Gober, and Lou said he supported this, and there's pages of certain things that he's addressed, some of the exact same things that you're doing. So again, as our United States Congressman, it looks like Lou's in the right direction, and I'm sure we all support what Lou's doing as far as getting this, you know, moving forward and addressing this. So I don't know what we can do. I personally think it's more of a, of a one-on-one thing here, what we believe in, and you can ask every one of us what we believe in. Clearly, like I swore on Mr. Brown night, everybody took that oath as far as the Constitution, and we all, you know, go by those laws and bylaws, and it looks to me like Congressman Borletta is moving forward and addressing somebody's needs. So I think we need to support our congressman and stay in touch with what's happening here. If he doesn't go far enough, I guess we can let him know. But he's at the national level, he's the guy that can actually change it, and I'm happy that he does agree with most of it. So I don't know if you saw, I know I gave a copy to Joe, I don't know if he's passed it out to all of the people here, or how you're doing that, but they are looking at some of the rights, unaffected rights and various things, and I know I've talked it over with Michael, too. But the process is pretty much in place, and I'm just reporting to you that at least, I don't know if any of you have talked to the congressman, but I did at least get a chance to talk to him and view what our city council is concerned about and everybody that's come down here to this, in the audience at the same time. Does anybody else here want to comment?
Yes, sir.
You're not our first stop.
I'm not your first one.
John Berg, you're not our first stop. I mean, this, this sort of approach on the Gober rights and this going on for a whole year, we started at D.C. We've been there. I've been down to this day, I mean, D.C., you can help by, you know, what we've done with the Gober rights, and it's a fair enough to the state to prefer. Helping the team in Germany and Poland. We go dive into states like a lot of times about the real ID. That took years. They even passed the House on a nanosecond, and sent it down, and I was like, it took years. Then two guys maybe get to start to talk to our need to help with something. Sure, we're here because this should be the last, and they didn't for a few years.
Okay. So no confidence in Congress? Okay. So what's I mean?
I was hoping to say your resume or your home page.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I have a statement on Dan Johnson, the founder of Panda, people didn't say. My statement, I'd like to see that Congressman Borletta was led astray. The amendment which he supported was similar to the Gober Amendment introduced by Representative Lou Gober, of the first district of Texas. Now, the amendment, the description of the amendment sounded like it was supposed to guarantee habeas corpus and due process. But if you read the amendment, the language that passed in the House last year, it actually limited the right to, of habeas corpus to three days. Normally, there is no limit like that. But the language that ended up being enrolled and signing the law, if not in any way addressed our concerns about indefinite detention provisions of the 2012 NDA Act, and the Gober Amendment was codified under section 1029 of the 2013 NDA Act. I have a letter from Dan Johnson that said, "I emailed a copy of it, told you my printer ran out of ink, so I'm going to have to curate some of what Dan said." He had gotten the chance to see the video from the last meeting, and he was down with you. And he would say that the concept sounds like something the council would support. He wants to commend you for being willing to argue your office to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and Constitution of Pennsylvania. And he says that while the protections of our inalienable rights hand the balance, it's refreshing to see councilors, don't we consider to stand up for these inalienable rights? Was that in line, he wanted to clear up some confusion created regarding the Gober Amendment. And as I had said, he explained about the Gober Amendment, two of the most outspoken outspoken opponents of the NDA indefinite detention provisions were Representative Justin March of Michigan and Senator Rand Paul Kentucky. Now, both of these opponents opposed the Gober Amendment that Representative Borletta was led with protect our rights. No civil liberties organization in the country or in the world supported the Gober Amendment. Now, there was one amendment in the Congress that would have repealed the detention provisions and addressed our concerns. That amendment was the Smith-March Amendment, which was by Representative Adam Smith of Washington and Representative Justin March of Michigan. Congressman Borletta unfortunately voted against the only amendment that came up for vote that would fix this problem. So now we have a situation where if we want to fix this, we're going to have to wait a whole other year for an amendment that will address our concerns to be passed. And that means at the earliest, a solution to our concerns would come in December, December of this year, January or next year. So Dan asks, "Are you willing to allow a person in Sunbury to be indefinitely detained by the military between now and December or whenever the next NDA Act is passed?" And that, there's, like I said, I was very confused because some might appear now, and you can read the full letter, it's going to be emailed to you before the meeting. But yes, as I said, the, I'd like to see, the Republican Liberty Caucus of Pennsylvania, within the past month, released their legislative agenda for this year, and they are supporting legislation such as liberty preservation ordinance, and they're also pushing for that as one of their top priorities in the general public here. Now, I, as Dan said, the earliest we can see D.C. take action to fix this thing would be December or January. Are you, what are you going to do? What are you, as a councilman, going to do to make sure that nobody in Sunbury is indefinitely detained without charge of trial? I just, I believe that Representative Borletta had been intentioned. I believe that he believed that the Gober Amendment addressed our concerns. But if you look at the language, section 1029 of the 2013 NDA Act, all it says is that if you get a trial in an Article III court, then you have rights to habeas corpus and due process in trial or hearing. But what it doesn't say is that you're guaranteed that. And so under NDA, you can still be, in Article II, you can still be tried in an Article I military tribunal commission. So the Gober Amendment did nothing in any way, did not in any way address our concerns, and you guys still have the power to protect us from indefinite detention. You have the power to uphold the Constitution, and I urge that you can vote on the liberty preservation ordinance as soon as possible because the people of Sunbury deserve the right to due process. They deserve the right to a trial by jury. And this, it's all remarks I have. If you have any questions?
Good. Like I said, I think, I think what this does is just, if we sign this, it just assures the people that we will not enforce any unconstitutional laws. Just because of all the talk that's going on in Washington and the State Houses, it's just, people aren't sure, and they just want to know that we're on their side, I think, is where they're, where they're coming at this.
Okay, can I mention something, please? The NDA Act, if I understand, and there's plenty of people here that probably understand better than I do, is basically saying that the executive branch, their latter, no double checking, can deem someone merely obliterating. Okay, I know there's some confusion as to last name, and they have to be considered terrorists, obliterating. And I'm sure if you think back to Nixon, he probably thought liberal emergency was obliterating. Okay? So would you want to have, I think these reporters here, we, you know, are you going to tell them that they don't have a right, that if I understand this NDA right, if the government calls them obliterating, they can just whisk away? And you know, creating this whole, what happens to them? They never get a day in court? They don't ever get charges against them? That's what due process is. Are you going to tell these reporters that you don't care that if they don't get a goings again, they don't want to happen to them? And just because they're obliterating, obliterating, that is what the NDA is like, is right? You're absolutely correct.
Yes, sir.
My name's Al Hoffman. I'm a resident of South Wrexport, but I have family living in Sunbury. I, I'm here as a proud citizen tonight, and I just wanted to say that in this issue with the NDA Act, the Constitution does not grant us rights. The Constitution just reinforces the fact that these are our birthright. And it's just wrong for the government to, to give this power to the executive branch. And it's not, it may be that habeas corpus is a big figure, but if you've been following this all, Chris Hedges, the Post's proponent and theorist, is pressing a case against the NDA Act based on unconstitutional giving of power to the executive branch. He's not a proffering, and this guy is serious, and the problem that he sees is not the habeas corpus issue, but the fact that if the NDA gives this power to take somebody away that's named, a, somebody that's aging, that may, that puts all reporters at risk. I mean, we've seen stories in the past of reporters emulating some of the, that person very easily taken away in the night, and that's really the loss. So we, as people, can't trust our federal government to deserve our rights. And in fact, they aren't granting our rights, that's why it's our argument, and that's what the Constitution provides. And so what we're asking you to do is just read the document, that you, as our representative, and you as people who have sworn of the Constitution, to say, "Yeah, we're going to do it." Okay? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Again, Kimberly Mall from Watson Town. And I wanted to address the Gober Amendment specifically. I'm not sure, I'm sure you've read it, I appreciate it, Mr. Bartolo. And in regards to the section 1029, it's the wording that people aren't paying attention to, where it makes reference to authorization for use of military force in regards to the NDA, people being arrested under the NDA, and who is otherwise entitled to the availability of such writ or such rights. And the Gober Amendment only says that if you get a trial in an Article III court, that you won't be denied your constitutional rights in that court. If there's no guarantee that you can get a trial, that's the problem. The Gober Amendment only addresses if they've already decided that you can be tried under an Article III court. But who determines whether you get an Article I or an Article III? That's the danger that the Gober Amendment does not address. It also deceptive because it implies that Congress can pick and choose who gets constitutional rights. It also does not recognize or protect the constitutional rights of U.S. citizens or counted abroad. That's specific on the amendment. In other words, it does not need to protect your right to a trial in an Article III court. Lawmakers have declared that America itself is a battlefield. They brought the battle of terrorism here at home. We've seen that in the news every day. Suddenly, you hear nothing about terrorism overseas, you see terrorists and radicals that they're bringing here at home. So America now is the battlefield. This means that anyone detained under the 2000 law authorization for use of military force or the aim of M, which was strengthened further by the 2012 NDA, would be subject to a military trial, not a trial in Article III court. trial, not a trial in an Article III court. Anyone detained under the 2001 AMF, as modified by the 2012 NDAA, is subject to laws of war. That is such should be terrifying. This applies based simply on the suspicion of being terrorists or being involved with terrorists by either the president or anyone under this man. This means they would not be in the Article III court, but rather would be subject to an Article I court, or would be contacted for military tribunals or court martial. In the 2009 Military Missions Act, it gave military commissions or tribunals or court martial, it's a statutory authority to choose whether or not they had jurisdiction. Or in a man's terms, that means that a military commission or an Article I court has decided themselves whether or not they will take jurisdiction over cases involving AMF or NDAA covered persons. So the language of the Gomer Amendment sounds good in and of itself. It does absolutely not have to guarantee you a trial in an Article III court. That's where the problem lies. It might sound like it helps once you know you're going to get a trial in Article III. You can still be indefinitely detained based on the White House saying that you're a terrorist. Additionally, if you do get a trial, it may be in a military tribunal and not a civilian court of law. However, should you actually get into an Article III court, then your rights would be honored unless otherwise entitled, which is the Gomer Amendment and its exact words. It comes down to those two words, otherwise entitled. The statement is basically said that you're not otherwise entitled, even though the Constitution says that we are. Under both Bush and Obama, if they deemed you a terrorist, you had no right to a trial because in their words, you are an enemy combatant. In reference to the NDAA, Senator Glenn DeGrand, who is on the floor, and this is on video, and I've said, when they ask for a lawyer, you tell them, "Shut up, you don't get a lawyer." You can watch that on YouTube. The senator was later interviewed and questioned about his statement, and he defended his words in this statement. And once again, this is also readily available on video. So, you know, the easy, the easy response would be, "Well, it still doesn't apply to me because they're just talking about terrorists." Well, do you know this for sure? Do you know, do you personally know someone who's been indefinitely detained, disappeared? How would you know? Who qualifies as terrorists and who gets the responsibility to determine who is a terrorist? What if the federal government considered your political views a threat? They could just think that your political views is a threat? What if they took it a step further and said that they considered those views to be the views of our new terrorists, new terrorists in town? They have said this about other groups other than Al Qaeda, all of which is, there's a plethora of documentation you can easily find, including Christians, constitutionalists, supporters of the Constitution, and especially now those who support the Second Amendment. You can see that law enforcement, military are now being trained to focus on those that support constitutional rights, that support the Second Amendment, as, you might want to keep an eye on those people. They could be radical, they could be the new terrorists. Well, then you bring it back to, if they're arrested, who determines if that person goes under Article I or an Article III court? The Gomer Amendment only applies if you go to an Article III court. Well, if you're already indefinitely detained and taken away under court martial, Gomer means nothing. So I guess my question to you as the mayor is, as we saw the gentleman who swore his oath to office to support and defend the Constitution would be the same. How does it make you feel? How do you feel about your oath that you swore to the Constitution and how that oath fits into protecting citizens and delivering our constitutional rights on a local level? Thank you.
During the Clinton administration, you had abortion protest groups classified as terrorists and that he could do some further investigation and, you know, sort of, I mean, everyone, I got all the different [inaudible]. I mean, he wanted to go deeper into them, and he had a person, anybody working, he classified as terrorists. So that's not even a legitimate word, because it's broader than you, if you work.
All right, just let me make my statement here. I, I'm speaking for myself right now. I personally agree with all this, but you guys have, but we have to understand what we're up here for. There's five of us sitting up here voting for the city of Summery. We vote for things that take the city somewhere that address the city of Summery. Now, you can say, well, this has, it does have something, but it also has, the overall ordinance, I bet, is hundreds of pages long. So when we vote on ordinances or anything that we voted up here, we understand the pros and the cons of anything, what impact that it may or may not have. Most of this talks about 1021, 1022, 1023. Tonight, we talked about 1029, and I'm sure there's 50 other things that are in this thing. For me personally, to vote in the city of Summery, that as a group and representing the 10,000 people living in the city of Summery, I want to know what impact that vote could have one year down the road or five years down the road, and I don't have a clue what that is. So I mean, I can say, you can ask me after this meeting, you can ask me now if I believe in the rights that you guys are talking, that everybody's talking about, and I do. When I swore that office, it's the same thing. I don't think, I, I don't, I'm not going to bring up an emotion for this council to vote on it, to support it, when every one of these guys can give you their own opinions after this meeting or right now if you want it. But I, I don't think it's up to, I don't think it's in the best benefit of the city of Summery at this time to pass it as ordinance for the city of Summery.
How the Constitution wasn't.
That has nothing to do, I'm talking about the hundreds of pages of that, I don't know what this is going to apply to. I'm just giving you my answer. And is anybody on this board that wants the board to bring it up for a vote? You need to talk about it?
I mean, the only reason I think that it would be a good thing would be to, to show our state and federal representatives how, how we feel so that when they're addressing it, just like we did with the synthetic marijuana. You know, even though we knew the state was addressing it and stuff, we still passed it locally just so that our representatives knew how we felt about the situation and that they would pass it at the state level. You know, the more communities that pass something like this, the more they get the feeling that, you know, maybe I should really be doing more on this because all these communities feel this way, you know?
But that was one issue, Joe, not thousands of pages of stuff.
Well, no, this is only the, the three, the three sections that are on there. That's all it would, that's all it pertains to. Because the thing itself is all on, you know, the budget, you know, the military budget or whatever, but this is, this is just three specific sections of it that we would just be making a statement that it's unconstitutional and we're not, we're not going to enforce any unconstitutional laws because it's against our oath. That's really all, that's really all it is.
What does the city solicitor think? What's his opinion? What's your opinion, sir?
I think that we've discussed about 20 different topics here. I think number one, it's obviously well researched by the audience. I think there's no question that everybody in this room believes strongly in the Constitution. But I think what the mayor's saying is that there are federal issues, state issues, local issues. Typically, the vote that the city council takes is on a local issue. For example, with the synthetic marijuana, there was a safety concern for people in the public. For snow removal, we worry about safety on the roads. This is a constitutional issue which is very important, but this council can impose its rules on the Congress or on the executive branch. The last comment, though, to all the different topics we've been talking about is, it's up to the city council to follow Robert's Rules of Order and vote as they'd like to. So we've heard a lot of strong arguments why you should vote a certain way. Put it to a vote, if somebody wants to make a motion, you make a motion. If you have a second, then you have to vote. But that, that's about all this city council can do. So I guess right now, the mayor has clearly said, "Somebody want to make a motion? Somebody want to make a second?" That's what it stands for.
I guess ironically, the very congressman that we're talking about, that you had a chance to meet with, rode into office on the coattails of, you know, a national issue that he chose to take up contention with locally, which was illegal immigration. So I do feel it's our responsibility locally, whenever we are asked, for at least us to reinforce the importance of the message to those above us in all levels of government. So I hear certainly the importance of the message and understand the necessity, especially now with these types of acts being considered, for us to do more each and every day locally to protect our civil liberties. Putting it into the form of an ordinance, however, I think is, maybe at this point, we're not prepared and educated enough on the complexity of this debate to put it into law. But I think certainly to reinforce the importance of the message that everyone's asking us to carry and actually hit Congressman Borletta and others like him at that level with the importance of recognizing what they have to say, minimally a resolution, I think would make sense to at least, again, support the message, tell them that we locally have not fallen to deaf ears, we have not stopped reading, we have not become uneducated, we have continued to be citizens of this country that care about our constitutional rights and protecting the Constitution and protecting each other. Because until we start doing more locally to raise the level of awareness on these things, and again, unfortunately, what happens a lot of times with stuff like this, you know, people think, "Oh, it's the crazies that are bringing this stuff up." The bottom line is, these are things that are being brought up by men and women that have, you know, fought and served our country, and they understand the importance of it from a perspective that very few people on the street today, who don't really fight for our freedom anymore, don't understand. So I'd like to at least consider at our next meeting a resolution that would at least summarize the most important components of that document in terms of protecting our constitutional rights, securing our local citizens' liberties, and giving our local law enforcement agencies and representatives as much power as we can in dealing with the federal and/or state law enforcement officials to actually, again, do what we can do to protect ourselves here close to home. So I think that would be a simple next step that would give us all at least something that we can work on.
And Rick right here, I'm from the city of Summery. I have a couple of questions to crack at you, and I do agree with my [inaudible].
Why don't you address Mr. quickly because he's one of the [inaudible].
Okay, well, I [inaudible] the lady from Watson Town, the gentleman from Southway in Spore. And any other, any other, anybody from Montreux County or any place like that or another town, have you taken it to your borough council, and what was the plan used for the other town?
I have.
No, I, I, I'm [inaudible].
I work together. So I have, I've taken it to our sheriff and my [inaudible].
Have you taken it to the council of Southway in Spore? You're from Southway, right? You're taking it to your borough, your city council or borough council?
It's, it's a process, but it can tell you that it's going before the [inaudible] county or the sheriff.
And the county commissioners to not buy it, and the entire county.
What about, what about Watson Town?
They're in the process of, in the process of addressing them, they're very interested in them all.
Okay, but that's the reason why. Why is Summery chosen now? I, I mean, I'm just asking questions.
Well, because we all work together statewide, we're from all different parts of the state. We support Ed and his initiatives here. Ed comes and supports, supports ours there for different areas of the state. We've got Harrisburg, Lancaster, wherever the area is.
Okay, then my next question would be, how many municipalities have signed on with what you're saying?
There's two counties in Pennsylvania that have already done it, Elk and Fortland Counties. And as Rick was saying, there's other counties in Pennsylvania that are currently considering. State Senator Mike Fulmer and State Representative [inaudible] are considering right now to introduce statewide legislation. And cities, cities, shiri, constables across the United States have already taken steps to require, you know, to protect our rights. And the reason I brought this to the council, I'm a state constable here in, for the North Ward in Camp Summery. And when I, I, when I became aware of this issue, I realized how serious it was. To apply equally our constitutional rights and apply the laws of war to people in the United States, that goes against the oath I swore to support and defend the Constitution. So I, because of the oath I took, I have to do all I can to support and defend it. And the best way I thought I could do that is to set the policy in my office that we would not cooperate in any way if we were ever asked to help with the indefinite detention of, of anyone in the state of Pennsylvania, if it was authorized.
My question was, you asked them to come here and address this.
I, I introduced this to the council, other people have heard about that I introduced it and decided they wanted to show up and [inaudible].
And that was my question. My next question, what process was that comes, or the municipalities, that was addressed in your homes, or your own clearances, stuff like that, and what's the outcome was?
If it hasn't been, if it hasn't been already, it's [inaudible]. And a lot of people are signing on, this is the beginning of the process, but if we don't stand up.
I, I couldn't understand why.
Why we're in Summery.
Right. And not, you know, not starting in your own.
Well, the question is, that's the [inaudible].
You start, you start at your backyard and then it spreads out.
It is, right here.
This is our backyard. You understand? This is our backyard. If there's, if there's a federal government, the military coming into Summery, then we have problems in [inaudible] sports too. And we have problems in [inaudible] County. And instead of having it ripple with a bunch of tyrants from the federal government coming in here and taking us away, we want it to ripple the other way. We want to have the people stand up and say, "Not in our backyard." So that's why we're here.
Okay. All right, so right now, what we're going to do is, is go with Todd's suggestions, and we'll keep it on the agenda for the next meeting and see if we can't summarize it and not make it an ordinance. Still getting.
Make it a resolution.
I have a variety of resolutions, Senator.
Well, then why don't you, yeah, send us something that doesn't make it an ordinance.
And these, all the resolutions that I've sent you, they've been looked over by constitutional scholars, legal teams from the ACLU, the Council of the United States, Petri Coalition, Penta, Vote Our Liberty Coalition, and there's really, really, so our constitutional lawyers that have looked over this and made sure that it's legal. Other cities and states across the country, Virginia already passed statewide legislation. This is something that is within the authority of the [inaudible] to support the Constitution. And due process is a concern for people in Summery, it's a concern to anyone, anywhere in America. And I'm glad that you're at least, that you're open to a resolution. I urge that, that action is taken as soon as possible because the longer we wait, that's the more opportunity for them to come in here and table our Constitution.
All right, so we, you get the, a couple of different resolutions that you have already put together.
Absolutely.
And if anybody else passes like, like [inaudible] County or anything, because Michael's going to check with them and see where the status is, anybody passing them before?
Elk and Fortland Counties, [inaudible].
We'll see what they have passed. Okay? Anything else? Want to thank you everybody for coming. This meeting's adjourned.